Okay, let's move down to Yale House, contracts for great release. Two.
All right, this is the same thing that did for Jay here a few weeks ago. We'll be doing it again in a couple of weeks. Just go through all this.
We do it for me in a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Two months or so, you'll have.
Something like that, yeah. This is just the first word. This just says who you are and who we are. That is all the new machines there. That is all the trade in.
That's the only name on there, but it's.
Here's the total. Your total payoff on all of them was $900,000.
Both door.
So, and what I did was I rolled, you had about $500,000 equity.
To make sure you don't have a lot.
I lowered the balloon payment by that much. So, your equity will stay in these machines. Same thing at yours. That way, we're not buying cheap payments with the equity. So, anyway, it's got five, your 5,000 hour full machine warranty. I get initials right there for accepting the warranty. And the initials right there, that's part of our uptime. It says that right there on that line, it says no travel time limits. And all that's on it. But I need the initials on, in that box right there. Since you're receiving a copy of the purchase order, I'll make you a copy of it.
I want a copy of this.
Yeah, you'll get a copy of all of this.
Oh, good.
Signature on that line and the dates for the terms of the purchase order, that top line there. Date, 21, and page 21. And then in that box right there, since you physically received the equipment. This is the 120 B form that matches your amortization schedule, which is right there. One hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight, thirty-seven for each of them a month. Three-year lease. Need all three of you guys to sign that one down there.
It's like our day.
You're on call.
Yeah.
I haven't got yours signed. She wasn't up there when I was up there. I don't know if she's up there. Nobody was up there when I went up there.
I'm up there.
Yeah. She's supposed to be here today. Maybe?
Usually she's off Monday.
Yeah, she wasn't up there. It was probably when I was up there.
She allows, she's pretty busy when she is here. Because it did, I see it did, most of what went on in Alphabell County, didn't you?
How you want to do that?
Just keep doing like we do. This is the amortization schedule that matches your 120 B form. See, like right here, your balloon payment's a million, twenty-six thousand. But your guaranteed buybacks, like a million, five, sixty, or something like that. So, there's where your $500,000 equity is at. All right, this is the notice to consent and assign. It says we're assigning all the payment streams over to SMB Bank at Shaq. I can just have you sign title and date. You can just put COM2 for your title if you want to.
Page.
Page 21. This is the deal. It says this is a tax exempt transaction the bank needs. Nothing to sign on that page. Just have you sign, print your name there, please. Sign and date. This says you've accepted the equipment there. That's from the bank. You can hit Roger and then that.
No, this is just the begin.
This says that we can keep it insured and not your insurance through after. This initial to the public call and request a copy of that, so maybe since you signed this. Megan signs that. This is all of our guaranteed buyback forms. There's eight of them. It says it's $45,000 or $4,500 hours, $195,000 is your purchase option. Same form we signed before when we altered verbally on the tires and stuff. But I can just have you sign eight of those. There's one for each machine. You don't have to title a date if you just sign.
This is where the turning machine, the big tires.
Yeah, like I said, it's the same one we did before, but we altered, you know, verbally. And one for each machine.
Same thing. He getting eight?
Eight. Woo!
How many Jake get?
Seven.
No.
So, you get, how many you get?
When I show up nine.
Which is special.
It's just, well, yeah, it's cheaper and older. I had one for me, but I didn't get a chance to run it.
Something like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we lease craters and trucks and a lot of other things.
Should control your costs while these are out, Chad.
Yeah.
You sure, Dave?
Yeah, you don't have to sign. That's the bill I give as a violation.
Where? I think I signed it, eh?
What's your bank, also?
SMB Bank. There are a couple of them.
Did you meet him at the hang?
Would I?
Oh, I don't know. He was out there in the tins.
You want copies for your bar and you just wanted to use our copies here?
You want me to just make this one or?
I can make it right here. I just need to know how many to make.
Well, mainly for me, I want that cop sheet that's got serial numbers on it. And should I have a copy for the whole, for later?
You can be. I'll send their copies for everybody. You guys got a vote on that?
He's not legit.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Accept?
Accept.
All favor.
Thanks, guys. I'll make your copies right here.
Okay. Okay, let's go to, let's go to Bruckner with contractor to go on back.
Do you want it's my ears or you want me to just hand them on down?
Well, we can hand them, there's like the one we just did. There it is.
He owes me lunch, by the way. It's called really, really, really late.
It called late, didn't it?
Yes, yes.
I'm moving.
He didn't order us anyway.
I know. I don't know. Is there a sign to sign or not? I can't remember. Does anyone need to sign or not?
Yeah, multiple measures.
So, the back, there we go. It's the back page. Okay, all right. There's four trucks, is that all you got?
Yeah, there's actually, there's twice on there, all the measures.
Right.
One more, Sean? Start on that one, that was George on the front page.
And then roll through the back here.
Yes, second page. Third page, I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter on back page, we're signed it.
Yeah, I just saw all three are signed it. And then it's supposed to be out only here, four of them. It doesn't have to go through, it's just that one-page deal for that five more deals. There's a backup that you signed last time. I'll send that to you. I'll print them and bring it to you. That's basically just for our records and your records. Or if somebody comes back and says, what was the purchasing agreement? There you go. Security, I didn't need any of these. You know, we usually use Clay. Like the last three deals, they beat them almost by three, four points.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, Clay gave us, Clay gave my best position, man. I'm sorry, I couldn't do any better than that. My job is to find you guys the best deal I can find.
Right.
You know? I understand there's a little bit of waltzing, but if you beat you that bad, then I gotta, gotta go with it. And then sometimes always have to have to go with some sort of fee. Shattuck, like a $200 document, per unit. If they weigh that, he.
Oh, wow.
So.
Got your little sum right there?
A lot of your money, even at Shaq, the George, a $200 doc. Eunid, my security and late.
Really? That's good.
Plus, they feed him, so.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
All right, signed that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, Toby, sorry.
Never check a phone.
That's what I haven't been doing. That's what I haven't done.
I'll give a copy to these guys all, but I'm still dealing with this.
All favor.
Two wrong their way right now, I just.
Okay, I'll have Kenny from our members to discuss plastic acts on fairgrounds, parking lot. Daya. Had some engineers do a couple of things, guys.
Got your, everybody got their reading glasses.
Are these both the same?
No.
No. They're different. Ones, ones clear across there, you see?
Yeah, they're in view, trying to build it.
Which is north?
Yeah. They're a.
Building to building.
Yeah, they're like a hundred foot from building out to. Hey, I need a microfinglass to get on. That's not going across the fence because there's all kinds of gas lines. What all is that, or I don't remember?
Okay.
This one's not, and that one, the wider one goes to, it goes out like to where the gates are, is that right?
Yeah, right, right away out to, clear out there, yes.
Where your red lines come across.
Right, right. Here, we got some people wanting to take. Well, what?
Okay, this is a copy of that.
Yeah, both of them.
There's two, two copies, one of them.
Uh, one of these, okay.
Okay, all right.
And these are both two inches deep, is that?
Right.
This is saying.
And that's what county, you know, the county workforce doing well. Doing the dirt work, keeping a lay down machine or something like that. But anyhow, our bids for Cummins is 56 and 57, type B and C. Now, I can't tell you which ones will, which one makes a difference. And Circle S paving is 48, 48, they're out of Clinton. It's.
Okay, so 56 on the first one, is that correct?
And that's Cummins?
Yes. That's our six-month bid. So anyhow, I took the highest price for the Cummins and just. Jay, turn that thing off.
I'm bored, man. I got no way.
56 and 57, so type is 56.
56.
Type C is 56.
We can make you a copy of that.
There's copies right there.
Yeah, that'd be.
I mean, copies of what?
Six months.
That's not bid, yes.
Oh, you can, okay. Yeah, if you would do that, that'd be.
But anyhow, the 915 times 57 comes up to 52,155, just for the asphalt, yeah, the material.
155, and that was for the bigger area or the smaller area?
915 is the bigger area.
Oh, okay, bigger, yes. Bigger area, okay.
Well, and time, and I times it time too, just guessing, because their equipment and everything else, it'd be 104,000, 310. But that's just, I'm just guessing. I ballpark, guys, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Usually when you figure the materials, double it, that usually covers the labor. That's, that's a ballpark to go by.
But now Cummins is gonna be coming out of Enid.
Yeah.
And Circle S will come out of Clinton. There is a company, Evans, it's Evans and Associates, right?
Right.
At Palm City.
Okay.
We'd have to, if we go out on bids, we have to do three, three bids anyhow for sure. I did theirs. It was, turned out to, well, 26,619 just for the blacktop. And then it'd be 52,238 for the, well, that's my guess.
Right, yeah, right, I'm, yeah. Do you guys feel like two inches deep is thick enough on that front where their majority of the traffic's gonna be?
Well, yeah, during the finishing, the blacktop, starting this morning, going on north of Burlington to the Kansas line. They're putting two-inch overlay on. Put an inch on with different oil, and then they come back and change the oil and put the other inch on. That's what Mike told me down there was the best way. Stutter landing in one pass, you land two passes, and it'll be a better job.
County don't have the machines though. No, we don't have lay down machines.
No, we don't.
Does the rock get removed?
The base there? No.
No.
What is?
Blacktop over the existing?
Right, over the existing, yeah.
The only place that will remove it is around that cement deal out in front of that middle building. The engineer had it taking that out. We'll just cut down and try to make it just as even as we can.
Your little parking spot.
Huh?
Your parking spot, that cement deal?
Yeah, I'll put the landing pad out there.
Yeah.
I just know the rocks that we do have out there now. You're looking two inches?
Right.
Not rocks bigger than that.
I know.
So, I mean, okay, a certain amount of removal needs to happen.
Right. They're right by your landing pad, yes.
I mean, I understand that you're not gonna get rid of all of it. Well, in front of our building and even exhibit building, I'm looking at both pulling sites here. And so, yeah, I'd still suggest some removal of the big log, the obvious big log.
It's gonna have to be, there's a big log on that.
Please, Ron.
On this, that you've got red marked off, now that'll go out to our fence? As you said, 100 feet wide? Does that go further to our fence?
No. Because you got a gas line, a water line, and I don't know what all's in there.
Sewer, sewer down there too.
That didn't go across the north fence.
No, I didn't think that, thought it was over 100 feet of that for sure.
That's what that engine, I paid 15,000, I'm supposed to get more and everything else, yeah. That's what that engineer had planned to begin with anyhow, because there's so much sewer line, water line, gas line, whatever else is in there.
Four-inch gas line runs toward west Cherokee there, back to Angler's Hollow.
How far is that off of our fence line?
I don't know. It's 100 feet.
It varies from two feet to three feet. It's not exactly straight through there, but that, that's approximately worth it, the gas line. In the ditch on the other side, there's fiber optic, and then you got a water line that runs in there at an angle and the sewer.
Okay. Do you have a measurement on? There's 42.7 physical to the right of way or whatever, up in the left-hand corner, from your Exton dark line?
So, you've got, somebody's got mine.
That, that tron, that tron.
You got 42.47. Is that what's?
About to right of way even there.
Okay.
Could be, I don't know for sure.
To that point from the right of way.
I didn't measure.
I'm just curious. I didn't know if that was added, you know, but this is 100, and that's 42.7. So, if that's the other part, third of, to the E's right on the pavement.
Let's be. This F, F O, that's it, can you see that there? That's your water and gas line. This is, G's your gas line right here. Well, I, and I'm guessing that, Chris, I don't know.
Yes, yes.
It's gonna cost a haul out of Enid well anywhere, but. Now, Circle S has done the town of Palina, they do very good. I think two inches will hold, you know, you're not gonna have giant semis or any kind of.
You might.
You ain't gonna have any weed haulers in a 100,000, 200,000 pounds, are you?
You know, a lot of traffic here, I mean.
There's trucks bring cattle.
Trucks pull in there with a load of cattle that don't run in an extension office. You're gonna have some worry on that thing.
Yeah.
There's not heavy truck traffic, but.
No, and not high-speed traffic.
No.
All right. I talked to Chad about it, someone listened to him.
And that's what I could say, act all the way putting on up there, and you'll have 60 mile an hour, both be 55, and they'll run 70 on a loaded wheat truck.
Thank you.
Okay, the original agreement was that, when the building issue and all that, that the county commissioners were gonna pay to pave the entire parking lot. What, is your agreement to pay for the asphalt in front? Is that what you all are agreeing to?
Well, I'd like to see what the bid first.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't mind. But we, you know, the one clear tire took me clear out back there south of that South Horse Barn. And this, that's gonna be a way a lot of money.
We didn't budget it down.
No.
We didn't budget that down?
No.
But our million dollars we spent on the all side is a way a lot of money too.
Is that made?
It's been a little over, actually.
Yeah, by dollars. Is that what you're saying?
We didn't budget an inch, our 12 account, so you're gonna have to take it out of that sales tax account. So, then that's going to drop that substantially. There's account summaries for you. That's a.
Well, I guess it's gonna be a higher price.
Since you're a wider approach to the fence.
You have 642,000 in there. And that's what we're paying all those out of right now.
I didn't see that.
735.
Yes.
Okay, so you guys are, you're going to check into, end on the cost a little bit closer?
I would like to, yes, of course.
And then?
Probably submit both scenarios.
Okay.
If you guys could go with that, I'm sorry, but.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I mean, Chad, what we did, but things changed.
Okay.
I just need to let you all know, as far as polling site availability for us out there, as of 2016, of course, presidential election, we got through it, but there was a lot of answering for me to do to the state on why we did not have a solid surface.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And I told them, I mean, we've moved, this is kind of our agreement, we're working on this, we'll be fine. Coming up on 2016, I'll have to do another review again, I mean, go into the state with it. I don't know what they'll tell me normally, what they do if I can't come in compliance in four years, or at least be working on this, that I have, I have to move that polling site. I don't have a choice. And so, at that point, I would, I don't want to, believe me, I do not want to move. But at the same time, sitting here and watching the elderly people try to come across, come across all this rock with their pains, and bless their hearts, we're doing a great job. And they don't want a handicap sticker. But nonetheless, I feel like accessibility is really, I would appreciate if it could move, at least as part of our offices, to enable us to be in, like I say, in compliance with our state law for just accessibility of voters.
You know, the fairgrounds attracts a lot of people from out of town that spend money here. And all of those people are not, it's not all horse events. They're not all wear and bags. There's an event that's gonna happen there, a statewide event is gonna happen there here pretty quick. And there's gonna be a lot of girls in high heels. And, you know, I mean, this isn't just.
Right.
You know, this is, you know, it's one of the few things the county does that attracts a lot of people. The Sonic and Subway managers came to Tyler a while back and wanted a list of the events, because whenever we have an event out there, they sell out a few. That's generating tax dollars.
It's doing good, yeah. As far as we know, that's the number one tax dollar.
Sure, I'm sure.
That comes to the county community. There's been an outside money, that's where it goes to us here, back in our area.
Okay, so I guess we will.
Would you all be able to that, those two scenarios?
Well, we'll discuss it. We're here to get information and talk. You know, there's five other people on our board, and I'm not gonna speak for everybody.
I know.
But, you know, we can go back and discuss it. We've got another meeting in a couple of weeks.
I'll.
I just, speaking for myself, we shouldn't be here. That ought to be done. We've done our part, y'all do your part, and it's that simple. I don't, that's that simple. We did ours, y'all do yours. Just go on, get it done, be done with it. We've done our part, we've done over our part, we're still doing your part.
We put a lot of time and effort into it.
It's time y'all get that done, it's your deal, not ours. We did our part. I want y'all to do your part, be done with it.
So, we'll take this back. If you get any numbers or anything like that, feel free to all our any time.
I'm going to.
And.
Talk to a guy from Cummins and tell him what we have, and talk, try to talk somebody in Circle S and who it is.
I guess I, the one question I would have is, is this on a volume basis? Like if you decided that you wanted to do maybe around the east side of the exhibit building, regardless of who paid for it? If you added more to it, does that bring down the cost per ton, any? It's not a volume, it's not necessarily a volume deal.
I would guess not. If you get over to 400, you get up to 400,000, you got to have an engineer.
Okay. Okay.
And that, we've had the engineers before, after, how we did.
Yeah.
400,000 tons?
Yeah.
No, 400,000 dollars.
Okay, okay.
Oh, oh, dollars. Okay, okay.
If that bid comes in over $400,000, you have to have an engineer stamp on it.
Good.
So, if we're doing it basis, possibly stay under that, or would not?
That would be like splitting the PO. No. Yeah.
In what length of time?
Do what?
In what length of time? In one year?
In one, yeah, in one year. You extend your faces out.
So, a guy could do one part at the end of the fiscal year and then right?
No, you better be very careful.
Yeah, you better.
Yes.
I'm not agreeing with any of that.
You're trying, I gotta agree with you.
No, I'm agreeing with any of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we take these or do you?
No, those are your houses, no.
I just need one, one of the.
You need one, which one do you want?
Full width.
Okay, so you, David.
I got one to go to Clark Ross and talk.
You got mine. Now, get away from that guy. Yeah, the six-month bids are all. Yeah, we've got the record.
But you gotta remember, on those six month bids, if the county is not doing a hundred percent of the work on those, you have to go out on bids, so. Even if you guys decided to do some on your part, to get those prices, the county would have to do the work on it. Cause if we, if we don't do a hundred percent of the work, then you cannot use those six month bids, is what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, but the county doesn't have the equipment to do the work.
Right, we gotta bid it, this is what we're saying, that they bid at six month bid, it should be similar. But if we're not doing a hundred percent of the labor on it, which we can't, we don't have the machines, so this is not a guarantee that they're, this is what they're gonna bid at that. But that, I mean, I wouldn't see why they wouldn't, cause they bid our six month bid at that.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Yeah, I'm just going off your six month, six month bid, but. And right now, before they had a price of those hundred dollars, rarely would say, this is, you just, it's gonna change every week. So Mr. or Mr. Trump gets into war, it may change, right question.
But oil being half of what it was, true, how much does that change the price of this asphalt?
From ninety dollars down to fifty six. That's probably an oil and rock and sand and a lot of natural gas and propane that makes it a ton of black top, almost fit in a horse ton. That's the problem, it's so heavy.
About Tennessee man?
Probably, I don't. Never tried a Tennessee man.
Cement?
Okay, okay, we'll discuss it in the meeting, and let me know, and I'll keep in contact, and I appreciate your time.
Cement an option for us.
It's not as good. Cause your cement, what cement does, it cracks, that's what cement does. And then the water runs in, we did a big church parking lot, and in ten years we haven't cleared out, we do it. You know, because of the freezing and cracking, the asphalt, you can maintain a lot easier and fill the cracks. I mean, cement being an option, but it isn't as good.
Would they have to oil this, like every other year?
No.
To keep it maintained?
Probably.
You don't oil it all, unless you got a crack, put a crack zipper on it.
Good, I think a lot of people with like asphalt driveways, large asphalt driveways, they come along and they oil them. Every.
Yeah, you can oil them and seal the cracks, you can't do that on concrete.
That's it, cracks is real.
So would that have to be done on this?
If it gets to cracking.
Is it gonna be a problem with this asphalt? Walking on it when it's hot in summertime and carrying that into the buildings?
Shouldn't be. Unless it's just two and a hundred fifty degrees, unless, yeah.
Like once it gets packed in, it'll be all, shouldn't drag it in.
Shouldn't, no.
Maybe a verse.
Think so, no, why would? But no now. Now, before they run that railroad over, you can, you can do sticks here, sometimes, yeah, it'll be.
Chuck, you mean you get two weeks off for it, with the donor?
I get two weeks, not with a lot of luck.
Now. Wonder if we decide to go out on bid, it's gonna be four weeks, right?
Yes, we have to publish it twice, and then we have to keep it out there two more weeks after the last publication, so it'll be a minimum of four weeks.
And we at least gotta have three people, there's also publications around it and whatever.
And send it to bid news.
Bid news, the state of Kansas is worse than the state of Oklahoma, I've been told, on their money, they've shut down everything. So Kansas boards are coming down, bidding down here. Might be a good deal, might be down.
If they do, that's right here, and there's an event planned, can they get in the gate and drive on the railroad to back here?
Yeah. Yeah, well, they can drive over once they pack it.
Yeah, you know, but while they're prepping it, you don't want people on it.
Well, we're gonna fly out the county doing orgs, I mean, dirt work.
Yeah.
So.
That's how I'm gonna tell them to bid it anyhow, tell them what I'm gonna say, you know, this is county, there's not much dirt work to do, one water hole, and next to that cement, clean that out. Probably putting. Just fill the dirt in maybe, or whatever, taking those rocks, pulling out of there.
You're basically gonna leave the same grade, you're just gonna smooth it up, is what you're saying?
If you go out towards Kelly's office, look at, there's a water hole off over here. I don't know how far it is, a hundred feet down there, we didn't make sure of that that day, me and Chad did. We can make sure today though, sometime I can.
Some of those bigger rocks and stuff that's everywhere have been filled in, will that vibrator crack them enough, or seat them in that? Where they're not sticking up?
On highways, I don't know, they put the, the end dumps in front of them, and they got arms to come out and look under the wheels, so they can't come loose, that's, I don't know how they would do it out here. The Circle S and Cummins, that's, that's the way it's all done.
I'll just go when they rock my road out there. There's a lot of big rock, gonna ask them if they'd come out with the vibrator, and I mean, it may go. Nice road, I mean, but you're looking at a straight run.
We got, well, we got packers looking to them.
Vibrator, vibrator. Either seat it in there or crack them up. Yeah, that's true.
Well. You can bid inch and a half, inch and a half crusher, but all of a sudden it's this big when it comes to places, so yeah.
Good.
As soon as I can get some figures.
Okay, all right, let me know.
Thank you all very much, appreciate your time. Are you coming up here now?
Have you heard any, I heard. This until it goes into effect, October one, October one of eighteen, but it can't be on the ballot before then, so then that, general in eighteen. Where they regulate. The ones that sell the three point two beer at the state.
Well, exactly, the deal wasn't on that building. But that's what's been you waiting circumstances about. Not getting.
Before. I think Kansas, Grant County went ahead and they just asked for the liquor by the drink.
Right, not too long.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know why she's saying that it can't, but I mean, like again, that's just ones that I've called and stuff.
It's rock pretty well, it's gonna be dragged out, but, well. We're the heavy point.
I would have to, with Tyler.
But in any rate.
I had never heard of anybody else you're saying.
You had the engineer out there, and you got a long time to hold if something happened.
Thank you very much.
Cause I thought that other deal was for the Sunday, for the other sale.
See, there's two total different things out there, so I don't know.
That's why I wanted to make sure it was liquor by the drink and not this additional Sunday sale.
Grant County went and they just, there's liquor by the drink and no Sunday sales, so.
So they, I could see why they would need to wait, if you're at the school and they provide the drink.
Then you can do that.
And that's all, I think that could fit anywhere, but I will double the statement.
Thank.
So you found all that out for us, before we get in trouble, but you can't buy them?
I'm sorry, where are we guys?
You found all that out for us, before we get in trouble, but you can't buy them?
She's shy, I'm, she's.
Grant Kennedy, there's a long time ago, didn't they?
They just did the liquor by the drink, they did not do the Sunday sales, which, there's two different separate things, if you.
Either the state or.
So how would we both do it?
Comes in and gets permits.
Depends on what you wanted. Please do the liquor by the drink, and we go ahead and do it now, but. If you want to do the Sunday sales, then I think it has to do it after. The.
They always wanna burn, they can be their own. Sorry, that's fine. This bad area. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You held that, it was a very, it's like.
He hasn't taken any action on that, did he?
No, he didn't. No action, I believe. Yeah.
No action.
Yeah, they want more information. All favor.
All right.
Now we're down to the big one, anybody else?
None from last year.
Yeah, it's good.
Sign your papers.
She's hurrying you, she.
Oh, you want me to get out of here?
She wants out.
I forgot about that, we'll be done by one o'clock, I can do that.
Actually, quit acting like your dad.
I got a, do you want me to give you some of your problems?
I do, it's getting to be confusing.
Got you a little help to watch it with?
She got fancy glasses, so she's gotta go get them, so that's why she needs.
Where they at? All right.
I'll tell you what, I'm going inside for it, and I'm not gonna look. Cause I heard two stories this morning about the last two. People wound up with terrible eye problems after the fact. And I don't know what it is about it, but. I like looking at the good looking girls, I'm not gonna ruin my eyes.
But what did you say?
Quoted you on that one?
Yeah, quoted him on that.
Be sure and get him.
You already got it. You wouldn't have to worry about seeing, cause he was.
That's right, I wouldn't be seeing nothing then.
Be pretty black, wouldn't he?
Here, Kate. What do you, let's stick together. I get myself a girl.
I'm gonna try.
It's gonna be on the radio, huh?
I'm gonna try, I know we're crunch time, and we got less than two weeks for this wedding.
Right.
Um, you know, Tommy's funeral is Wednesday, right?
Yeah. Did he always live in Cordeau?
Yeah, he lived in Cordeau, he lived right in, in a housing desert right there on the north side.
Yeah, I, two balls, he presented all his.
Yeah, it's amazing, that deal, you can, you know, you can look at the sun, I mean, it's out every day, but during an eclipse, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about, we don't understand why it's.
I don't get it.
Sales newspapers, expensive side of the sales stuff, and they all run, move, go places, like.
I mean, it's cool.
That line where it's gonna be a hundred percent, you can see, you know, it's funny, they're gonna be making.
You know what's funny, everybody went to Kansas City and Nebraska to see it, and I watched the weather last night, and it's supposed to be cloudy up there. They're gonna get us here better from here than they are.
Channel five put a thing out, and Alba is one of the only towns that actually is gonna see it ninety percent, Oklahoma, Alba, Walker City.
Well, the captain, they'll be driving in there then.
It's supposed to be one, one oh one.
We should've told everybody that was here, so everybody would've come.
But if you look outside, it's already getting cloudy.
So, yeah, I know, it's, it's getting cloudy. I didn't ask Tony, but do you, is this control box on for the diesel tank outside?
Um, they told him it was, cause we did a receiver report.
What?
So, glasses and beer, or? Don't listen on top of camera. Right.
Yeah, we could draw on that line, they drew that line across.
Somewhere, somebody will film it, we can watch on TV.
That's it, we get.
That's what everybody keeps saying, just watch it on the news.
That's where I want to watch.
The Weather Channel's supposed to be doing it live.
Just fly, fly it through the airplane and just pretend like they want. Yeah.
Honestly, about to make it still work.
Your rodeo pictures look good.
What?
Your rodeo pictures look all right.
Oh, well, thank you, I had a lot more that I sent to you, we just didn't put them in there.
What's your boss in it?
No, it's the, David puts it together. Same as David.
You guys do this.
I gave him ten pictures. I was taken, he put four pictures.
When you're extending warning on a track.
But he doesn't do that one, I was in David's one page, and it was like.
I don't know.
The other one was picture on radio, and then the two action shots.
We're working on. We just spent ten thousand. Like a bucket, like, you know?
Bear back, where, so those pictures were way better. I was so irritated. The only reason I went so early is so I could get the green candidate, and he didn't even put it in.
Are you coming Friday?
Saturday.
You're not doing Friday?
I'm gonna come Friday, and then I'll get a group shot of all of them, cause they'll all be there. I brought it up this morning, and I told them I'll do both days if they want me to, but I, Lynn said the Saturday thing sounded better, just to. Get them all together. Right, Jeff?
What was it, Dave? Boots for Deputy Wills. Is that the new one?
Cause I really needed that day off.
Where's he from?
He was living in Enid, he's supposed to be moving there, but our.
He moved to Harman.
They moved to Harman.
Where they were moving.
Cause I didn't, it was started ten days.
Pretty young.
So he looks very good.
Rick has his surgery this weekend.
I think I got a whole sign arrived spot this time. I know, Mary, it's due after. All favor. Blanket purchase order.
He didn't see my huge pile of orders.
Oh, yeah, I know. Mister Three, what do you have? General Governor. That's Tom Gereski.
We know where it goes.
Jet responders. All right, set your own government dinner. Coming to come. I know, I'll be up top filming.
Uh, one of the...
First I should.
First week of football?
Really, I agree on the game, yeah, Tom Nelson gonna be there, wait, wait, talk to him.
Get our pictures, get the real pictures, and then we can do it.
It's a home game to our team, but...
Braden worried that he had, that I already called George Severn, that he would not be there at the end, the second game. Yeah, I said, he took it easy on you, you don't have to run twenty laps. But he didn't say whether those twenty laps were around.
Start us to off the, around the gym.
Around the gold tree. You didn't talk to anyone, yeah? This is your cousin's wedding.
Cherokee's Day, we're gonna move till Thursday night.
What do you do all the...
One day.
Oh, Brock.
I almost just... Well, I wish, kind of, the dark crew. If they don't have school on Friday, play on Friday, we don't play as good.
It's all junk, it's a matter of...
I'm media, I was on thirty on the...
They look, tell Ryan, just tell me, tell us, please.
He called him last week, and he's a world-class end of thirty-six acres, not that I thought forty-eight, what you had to do.
Tom Parker's, Tuesday, fourth, third, third, and fourth tournament. One of my senior years, got snowed out. So, we played the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then won the tournament. The next game was until, like, the next Thursday.
So, rotation.
I don't know what to give, cause the water's down, I can't...
And then you get into a channel of, 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 things like that, lots. Make a motion, approve. All favor. No, no. No Jeff Lightman's on there, or?
He's both of them, then he's on.
Third, two of them. When I read that next to my, I wonder, sounds like they're gonna spread some work remark. Make a motion to approve. All favor. Engagement letter from Charles W. Carroll, P A, for our account.
Just, you have to sign it, Toby, and it is all new, it asks, Paige, this is, this is the thing that they started. Last year, the auditors requesting them to do an engagement letter, or he's doing our budget.
Those auditors.
Do what?
This auditor. That whole state?
Twenty-first.
Eight, okay. Eight, twenty-one, right? I was thinking about that longer. Make a motion to approve. All favor. As part of Consholm Bridge Order, Bridge Construction, self, one, two, and three.
No, both of them are your ones.
Yeah. I love Miss Globe posted to, where it is an actual, yeah. Alright, sixteen percent is the one. Make a motion to approve.
Say again.
Huh?
Both?
Yes. All favor. Request removal of Tully Hunter, seeing officer probably arrested, it's a point, Tully Hunter, who? Not removed, sorry.
Make a motion.
Second. All favor. Are you caught up now? Yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll let you read that top little email, before you make a decision on the next one.
Oh, okay.
The other one verbally said it was fine, that one says she recommends it not, and then you do, a bit, I mean, bond.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
But we're out of compliance, and if we are, because we already have Troy on there, so... Whatever you guys decide to do, we need to make the decisions, and Troy also, cause we have Troy and you on there now.
Yeah, sure.
And I know when I called Cheryl, Sherry, last year, or two years ago when we did that, she said it was fine. When I called Jesse, who took Sherry's place, he said it's fine, but when I emailed Cheryl, she says... They have to be bonded, since they're not true county employees.
They have to be bonded?
Yet they're not county employees, they have to be bonded. If they're gonna, if they're gonna be, if they're gonna be receiving officers or requisitioning officers, they have to be county employees, or they have to be bonded. But I presented it to her, as these are elected positions from the patrons of the county. And she says if they're not true employees, which is going away, that they're true employees, and that we pay, have a check. Cause like, the ambulance district, I mean, we do not do their payroll, so they are not true county employees. Probably should've had them stay here for this discussion.
Alright, about it, but according to, cat first, I think, really should be carved that bond.
Cause they're not true county employees.
Right.
The amount nine and ten in the count.
Do we have bonded with, 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 with our account?
No, can I have their account?
They got, they got over, man, what a man I am, okay? I don't know.
Fairgrounds, right out of there, a million, a million, a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We can take no action on it.
Well, I was thinking we better, since we bonded, hadn't we?
Discuss it, but I have not had a chance to call him, and I never even thought about, top of the day, the wedding was in. The statute reads as, the receiving requisition officer will be a county employee.
Yeah, right, here's the money now. I get to see what the farmer, the farmer's down to.
What?
There's stuff of farmers, too.
That doesn't run through ours, so...
I don't, but I get to see it, how much it is.
Yeah.
Total's one twenty thousand, no more than that.
Oh, that's years ago, it was a hundred thousand.
Hundred ninety-nine.
See, the Florida farmers can do the same thing. They can be bonded, and they don't have to have the county.
That's what, that's what Garfield County does, bond all theirs.
Well, that's kinda like Nesska Town over there, you know, there's nobody, we can cover it. They can be in Burlington, which county employees are, right there dealing, but Nesska Town is a little bit of a headache.
I did not say that.
Well, I mean, over that deal, and so I checked, and you can bond for a hundred dollars, they can bond themselves for a goodly amount for a hundred dollars.
Cool, what you just said.
And it, well, I meant by problems, physically being able to go get it done, and back and forth, and they're not there. Yeah, well, thank you, I'd, I'd need that.
Well, on that, you know, it don't cost much to bond them, though.
No, don't need. As far as actual dollars, I can't remember what, I checked with Rita out there, and is who I checked with. They've got, they've got a list of, ten different bonds, fifteen, or whatever, depending on what kind of bond you want, and well, you look at that thing, and you think, well...
But Rita will do all the work on it, and we'll just, just tell us how much, and she does it all, she's, it's all in.
So, one auditor says yes, one auditor says no, and then the auditor says yes, it's a new auditor, right?
Well, he took Sherry's place, and Sherry told us yes also, last, uh, two years ago, when we started, or three years ago, when we started making them be county employees. Cause I called her, and Chad called her both, and they said...
Well, that one says...
And this one, I mean, ranking wise, she would rank higher than the field auditor. But the field auditor's the one that audits us, so...
There, there, yeah, that's a good, good statement right there.
They just, they don't wanna do this, they don't even bond themselves, which shouldn't be that much, right?
Well, I...
I'd say a big couple hundreds.
Like you say, I, I don't, I don't know what bond you would want, there's, there's discretionary bonds, there's all...
I can go, I can go grab the, um, the statute, cause I have it wrote out, and stuck in my receipt, and I'll see what bond it says.
See, maybe, and of course, they're all based on amount of money.
Yeah, a dollar.
That's, that's it.
We go grab it, and we'll just...
I meant for years and years, thirty-seven years I was on the square, but we're the only person bonding on the square, we was the craters.
He knew when he can get a couple hundred dollars out of you.
They, and it was like, uh, cost us, there, for a long time, like seventy-eight dollars, it was... The bond, and I had to build the craters.
Not bad.
Now, it probably isn't.
Well, it's cool. I can see the sun right now, you girls better get... Thing is, though, that's a, to guard a deal, when all this is, well, you go ahead, well, I said, can.
It doesn't say on here what kind of bond it has to be, last night, I skipped over it.
Sounds like they get...
Huh? They do?
Yeah.
A blanket bond, so it says, shall provide evidence of a blanket bond coverage or employee dishonesty and liability insurance for each such designated.
For that much money, that's more costly, but...
I don't know.
Again, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know what to say, where we have one, but, I mean, I guess I could email Jesse and see...
Jesse Moore?
See what it says.
I think he's about as good as anybody.
He's the one that verbally told me that it was fine.
Yeah.
That as long as they're, that they, um, are elected by the people, they're as close as you can get.
Elected by people, I guess.
Well, if, if nobody running us, and they reported, right, maybe somewhere, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, do we?
Well, I mean, there's still, I mean, you know...
Need to go to number two lady and see what she says. Whatever, what is her name? Number two, all fair. Cindy, Cindy Birdson, or?
Oh, sir, Cindy Birdson.
I'm gonna take the safest route.
You're covered, being bonded, yeah.
You may just pay the front.
Oh, I'm, I'm talking about the bond.
Oh, the bond.
I'm not saying anything about that either.
Safest route is no action till we...
Till we find out.
I tell them, we take no action till we find out more information.
I second that.
Cindy Bird, is that him? All favor. Now we're down to private property, access easement, southwest quarter, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twelve, we're placed in arms.
We got that easement around there, you know?
I don't, I'm sorry, I was still...
This is for... I can't read that.
It don't matter.
Kinda right, I told you.
Yes. So this is in your territory?
If this was the one I'm doing, it's for, uh...
Yeah. If, if you're...
Yeah, I know where it's at, we're just moving a horn from the west side to quarters to the north side.
Don't move.
All on, all favor. Wow, I'm not gonna read all these schedules.
Get them all on. Get them all on.
Right, so sideways, so I wouldn't lose it, so we could...
I'll, I'll make the motion.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, for all eight.
For all eight, all eight graders, yes, resolution to dispose of all, eight graders, we must be due.
All favor?
Thank you very much.
We got a need of news for starting too. Same mark, sure.
Well, then we do a sign papers.
And everybody's watching.
Didn't, yeah, we are, we are, we already do the.
Yes.
Everything. Pretty unforeseen business.
Move where you're going.
Sir, how about that unforeseen business? All favor?
You better speak up quick.